Good evening, everyone. My name is Barbara Johnson. I'm the president of Minneapolis City Council. Welcome to this adjourned session of the city council. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
Conno.
Here.
Wright.
President.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsani.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
We are all present. We have a quorum present. Next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. I would like to recognize our special guests that we have with us this evening. We have from the Park Board Commissioner John Irwin, Annie Young, Liz Walinski, Scott Freeland, Anita Tab, Stephanie Musich, and Brad Born. Thank you for joining us, and they will have their own meeting. We also have two members of the Board of Estimate and Taxation, elected members, Mr. David Wheeler and Carol Becker. Thank you for joining us, and we have our own meeting also later. Tonight's public hearing provides the community an opportunity to comment on the city's 2016 budget and property tax levy as proposed by Mayor Hodges and as further amended by the council's Budget Subcommittee during its markup this Friday, past Friday, December 4th. The proposed 2016 budget includes the proposed 2015 tax levy payable in 2016, as well as the five-year capital budget, the 2016 consolidated plan for the city's Community Development Block Grant, and the proposed municipal rates for water, sewer, and solid waste services. Each of these matters is reflected on the Agenda for Action by the city council following tonight's public hearing. Under state law, the city is required to conduct at least one public hearing to allow for citizen input on the proposed budget. Tonight's hearing is the second on this proposed budget. The first hearing was held on Wednesday, November 18th. Before we begin, I'd like to go over a schedule for this evening's proceedings. First, I will call on staff to provide a brief synopsis of the proposed budget. A copy of the mayor's proposed budget of 2016 is posted to the city's website, and a full printed copy is available for reference with the city clerk. The council's Budget Subcommittee, under the leadership of Councilmember Quincy, conducted hearings on each department's budget request over the past several months. As I mentioned, the final markup session was completed this past Friday, at which time amendments were brought forward to the mayor's proposed budget, and they are included in the proposals submitted, presented to the city council tonight. All documentation related to the budget is posted and available from the city's website. After staff has completed the budget overview, we will open the floor to public comments. Speakers will be heard in the order they have registered. If you wish to address the city council tonight and haven't already done so, please sign up with the city clerk, over here. Each speaker will be given a speaker number. We ask that all speakers, please be ready to step to the podium when your number is called. Speakers will have two minutes to address the council. If you have printed materials to submit for the public record, please give them to the city clerk. Once we've heard from all the speakers, we will close the public hearing. At that time, the city council will reset its meeting for approximately 15 minutes. During that recess, the Minneapolis Board of Estimate and Taxation will convene in this chamber to conduct its budget hearing. A budget meeting, excuse me. After the Board of Estimate and Taxation has concluded its meeting, the city council will reconvene in this chamber to take up and consider the city's proposed 2016 budget. At the same time, the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board of Commissioners will be meeting in Room 333, which is the conference room that is adjacent to the mayor's office, just down the hallway, to act on the proposed 2016 budget. Those meetings will be running concurrently where folks interested in observing them. There's an overflow space across the hall in Room 319, so just through those doors, where people can monitor the proceedings in this room. If you do not wish to speak tonight but would like to monitor the meeting from a seat, you can move to Room 319, just across the hallway, and watch the TV in there. I would just also like to welcome Mayor Hodges to the meeting. Thank you for joining us, Mayor. And with that, I will call on Ms. Sandra Christensen to provide a brief summary of the proposed budget before us, and then we will open the public hearing. Ms. Christensen?
For welcoming me this evening, members of the city council, Mayor Hodges, thank you for the opportunity to provide a very brief overview of the proposed budget that is before you this evening. As Council President Johnson noted, the budget that's presented this evening incorporates the mayor's original recommendation from August, as well as the amendments that were proposed and adopted by the Budget Subcommittee approximately a week ago. So the numbers that will be presented to you this evening are slightly different than what you may see on the website, but not materially, and they will reflect no changes in the overall property taxes associated with the mayor's recommendation. The budget presented to you this evening represents a balanced budget for 2016. It meets the city's current obligations and contemplates future needs for the community. The total budget is $1.24 billion. It's a 3.8% over the 2015 budget. The budget maintains current service levels from 2015, and it also incorporates $17.5 million of mandated cost increases. It also includes ongoing funding for program enhancements of approximately $6.3 million and $24 million in expenditures for one-time items. This budget relies on property taxes to provide for 23% of the overall budget. Less than one-fourth of the budget is provided by property taxes. The recommendation and proposal includes a 3.4% increase in the city portion of a property tax bill. This compares to the statewide average of 5.2% for cities. The proposed budget before you this evening, at 3.4%, reduces city property taxes for over half of the homestead residential properties within the city, based upon current analysis and valuation information from the county. This evening, the city will be reviewing levies for several different entities for which the city is responsible for adopting a property tax levy. The chart before you shows that there is a portion that is largely related to the city operations. There's also a portion associated with the ongoing obligation for library bonds when the city was responsible for the library. We're paying off those bonds. The Park Board is also incorporated in the city's bottom-line property tax levy as adopted, as well as the Teachers Retirement Association, the Board of Estimate and Taxation, and the Municipal Building Commission. With each dollar that is paid in property taxes by a property owner in the city of Minneapolis, the chart before you shows how much of each dollar goes towards the various services that are provided to the community. You'll see that approximately 25 cents out of every dollar goes to fund police services. There are another 10 cents to fire services and the other items that are portrayed in the chart. And with that, that was my very brief overview of the proposed budget for 2016, and I'm happy to stand for any questions, either now or later in the proceedings.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Christensen? I'm using speaker management, so if people would sign on, that would be great. Seeing no questions, thank you very much. With that, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow members of the public to address the city council.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. So we will now proceed to the public comments section, and I have the register in front of us, and the first person to speak, number one, is Mr. Mike Julius, and the second person, if they would stand behind Mr. Julius, Mr. Frankie Scirato. I'll try and give two names so that we move things along. Mr. Julius?
Thank you.
And if you would give your name and your address, please.
I will. Mike Julius. I live at 5756 Knox Avenue South. I work downtown Minneapolis across the street, at US Bank Plaza, 200 South Sixth Street.
Thank you.
Thanks. So I'm here this evening for several reasons. I've worked downtown Minneapolis for 25 years. I've worked at US Bank Plaza across the street for six or seven years. I managed Capella Tower for about 16 years before that time, so I have a strong knowledge of downtown Minneapolis and where it's coming and where it's going. Approximately 15 years ago, I was involved in the sharing sales belt on Avenue of the Arts, when we redid Third Avenue for the first time, 15, 16 years ago. I personally was involved in some of the boulevards, adding electricity, water plants. I think Councilmember Goodman remembers when we were the first boulevard that went in. So a lot of experience working with the city. Also, five years ago, we started working with Mark II Project, which is the double bus lane transportation, and very involved in that accessible project, supposed to take two years, we got it done in one. So again, a lot of public involvement with the city. And I'm involved in the Third Avenue Project. I work across the street at US Bank Plaza, and the reason I bring this up this evening is the first time myself and my coworkers heard about this was on November 2nd of this year, and we learned that this was going to go forward. And we met with city staff at that time. We had a second meeting on 11/18 with city staff, and we were told that, "Thank you for your comments, but this is what we're going to build." The reason I bring this up, there was absolutely no dialogue, no neighborhood dialogue. I wasn't asked what I thought of this building or thought of this project, which is unfortunate. I would request going forward that there would be a written dialogue with extensive detail that would follow. I attached a letter, which I think everyone has, it's been made public record. It's from Minneapolis BOMA, which represents 700 members, and most of these members who have been contacted are now on board with the process needs to slow down, and to have a better dialogue.
Can you wrap it up, Mr. Julius?
I'm sorry.
We've got a two-minute clock.
Two minutes. You have the BOMA letter. There's a city staff meeting letter that was sent out in 11/19, which we have not heard response from. So where I'm going with this whole thing is, the business community has had zero involvement in this so far. I personally, I shared with you my resume, I want to be engaged, I want to explore this with everyone. It's not happening.
Thank you.
I represent all these buildings on Third Avenue, so long and short of it, we'd like to be engaged, we'd like to be involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Mr. Frankie Scirato, and I apologize if I've...
It's Francie Scirato.
Francie Scirato, thank you. And then behind her, Timothy Dinherter Thomas, please.
My address is 2803 East 38th Street. I'm the block club leader. I have some maps of my neighborhood for each of you.
Okay, we'll have them.
If there's someone here to pass them out, thank you. Okay. Mostly, I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. I want to address the funding gap that's in the basic public infrastructure, like roads. I think as soon as possible, we need to close that funding gap because the shortfall is suppressing the funding for other valuable infrastructure, such as streetlights. And my neighborhood, I'm passing out the map, my neighborhood in 2010 was, you know, we didn't have that many businesses, and it was a kind of a dark street, and there was a lot of crime. And lately, our neighborhood has a lot of businesses now. We have the Cardinal Bar, we have Ted Cook's Barbecue, we have Keen Eye Coffee, Northbound Brew House, Cupcake Social, we have a flower shop. And I would like to ask that we get more money for streetlights. I like the Acorn ones that we had in the 2009 proposal for streetlights, and I'd like to see 10 of them on East 38th Street because of all the businesses. We have brand-new apartments. We have 180 units in Longfellow Station, that's about 300 people, and we've got 63 new units behind the Cardinal Bar. That's probably 100 extra pedestrians. So I don't know if I can show this, where I proposed the streetlights, but I'm going to put it up here. I don't know if you can see it.
It's not working.
Not working today? Okay, that's all right. I can say what's on here. We've got brand-new light rail station.
There we go.
Here we are. I put red dots where I'd like some. We have the Hiawatha Light Rail Line right here. These are the new apartments with 180 units. I put red dots where we should get some lights because we have a brew house here, people getting off the light rail. We're going to be, a blue line goes into the green line now, a lot of people, so we want to keep a good lit-up street to let people come in and enjoy our neighborhood and have it be safe. So with that, I just ask that the funding gap be closed so we could have more streetlights in areas like this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Mr. Timothy Dinherter Thomas, followed by Isaac Russell Hart.
Hello, and thank you. My name is Timothy Dinherter Thomas. Address is 3100 Longfellow Avenue. I want to speak to four points, and I'll move through them quickly. First, I want to speak just in support of the continued funding for the Minneapolis Clean Energy Partnership. I know that that is funded in an increased way in the budget, and I appreciate that. I don't understand that there's any particular move to cut that. I know that was a big concern last year, and just really appreciate the council's continued support of that program. Second, I have heard some rumors or mentions that there may be some amendments being considered around increasing funding for the police department at the expense of some of the intended programs around LED lighting. I wanted to express that, to the extent that the increases in funding for the police department are, as I have heard, partially to support increased training to help police officers confront internal bias and de-escalate situations in our communities, I'm strongly in support of that. To the extent that proposed funding is about fortifying or militarizing our police system at the 4th Precinct or otherwise, I'm strongly opposed to that. I really think the city of Minneapolis needs to step up and help lead the way towards confronting of the problem that we're seeing all across the country of police violence against people, particularly young black men. I am concerned that the source of the proposed cuts is the LED streetlighting program that has been advanced through the Clean Energy Partnership and other efforts, particularly because in talking with city staff, I've come to understand that the payback time on those LED streetlight replacements is a matter of months, not years. So in essence, this is cutting away for the city to save money and to plow more money back into its ongoing operations. I finally just wanted to speak to the process and would really like to encourage the council to make sure going forward that any major changes that happen are proposed and able to be viewed by the public in advance of public testimony, so that there's really clear information about what we can respond to in these comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Isaac Russell Hart, followed by Ashley Fairbanks. Mr. Russell Hart.
I'm just going to ask, I pared five minutes down to three minutes because that's what the school board gives, is three minutes. Everybody's gone over two minutes.
We're doing two.
Great.
Okay.
Wonderful. Isaac Russell Hart, 3117 Portland Avenue South. Yolanda, you'll get my vote if you help me out with this one. I'm opposed to the specific part of the budget regarding the police union and their funding. The fear of police in our city is deep-rooted and real. That fear is what brings me here this evening. I do not want my tax dollars funding our police department as it functions now. I cannot pay taxes with a clear conscience while the MPD functions the way it has since its inception. I have paid for the training and weaponry that has killed and injured a countless number of lives. Jamar Clark's blood is on my hands. My money bought the gun, bullet, and training that killed him. I even paid for the pepper spray that my wife was assaulted with while peacefully protesting. The Montgomery Bus Strike took place because a service to the community was not administered in a just and equal manner. People stopped paying for the service, and the business was not able to function. Boycotts in South Africa all but ended apartheid. The government had no choice because they need commerce to function. These are examples of money trumping everything. I believe the surest and fastest way to fix our MPD is through its budget. That said, we have a wonderful opportunity to show the nation and the world how to solve the police brutality issue. You 13 people can do more than the thousands that were on the street outside the 4th Precinct. Cam was there. And you can prevent it from happening again. It's quite simple and doesn't involve body cams or more training, as this budget has, or more black cops on the street. We say no to the police union. Not with our money, not like this. This budget should not pass without a major overhaul of our police department and its practices. Almost done. One need looked no further than the problem of domestic abuse, to see a great need for sweeping changes in our MPD. I have seen many domestic abuse situations, but none handled well by a police officer. Not three months ago, the police were in my house for my battered sister, and despite ample evidence mandating they file a report, they did not. Why? They don't understand the people or the problems they are dealing with. Thank you. They tromped into my house with guns looking like a SWAT team to deal with a scared, drunk, drug-addicted woman who would never call the police. And this is the best part. From 2012 to 2013, there was a dramatic drop in 9/11-related domestic abuse calls. 17,418, and it was holding at 17,000.
Mr. Russell Hart, can you wrap it up, please? Can you wrap it up, please?
I'm on my last paragraph.
All right.
Was there a great... So we had almost 8,000 domestic abuse calls dropped. Was there a great reduction in violence or just less people willing to call the police for help? You can boycott the police union, or the people will boycott the police. If I understand correctly...
Mr. Russell Hart, your time is up.
The initial call leading to Jamar Clark's death, this is a public...
Your time is up, sir.
The initial call leading to Jamar Clark's death was a domestic abuse call.
Sir, sir, you have exceeded your allotted speaking time.
No, this is a public speaking.
In the interest of other speakers who are registered to speak, if you could please wrap up your comments, we would appreciate that. You have, your time has expired. Please be seated. Please be seated. Okay, this gentleman is going to have to be...
Sir.
Sir, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Fairbanks, you'll be followed by Arlene Fried. Thank you.
My name's Ashley Fairbanks. I live at 2617 36th Avenue South, proud resident of the 2nd Ward. Thank you, Mr. Gordon, for being the best city council member all the time. Anyway, so I'm here to remind you guys about this date that's coming up in 698 days from now, and that's November 7th, 2017. And that's the day that will hopefully push a bunch of you out of office by electing people who are actually willing to represent the people that they were voted to represent. So I just, we deserve so much better as a city than so many of you who aren't uniformly outraged when people show up and shoot at peaceful protesters. Thank you to those of you who are there, but not enough of you were there and not enough of you were upset. So you passed this goal for the city, saying that we're going to have equity in our city, that we're going to have one Minneapolis. The language is disparities are eliminated, so all Minneapolis residents can participate and prosper. But shouldn't we also be able to live? Like, shouldn't we also be safe? If you can't pass a budget that aligns with the goals that you yourself passed, you don't deserve to be in office.
That's right.
And we will get you out of office. And those of us who are young and have energy are getting off Twitter and off Facebook, and we're getting onto the streets and knocking doors for people who are willing to represent us. So I just can't believe, last year with the budget, we gave up a cup of coffee for certain citizens of Minneapolis, and we, for that price, forsakened a lot of efforts that would have actually pushed equity in our city. And equity isn't like racial equity toolkits, and equity isn't discussions about equity. Equity is actual equity, and to do that, we have to make sure that we keep things working in a way that works for all of our citizens. So I just ask you, when you pass this budget, to think about what is going to work best for all citizens of Minneapolis, and to know that there's consequences if you can't do that. Thank you.
Arlene Fried, followed by Yolanda Hare, please. Ms. Hare?
Arlene Fried, 1109 Zerxes Avenue South, and I'm speaking to the Downtown East Commons council members. I believe that Downtown East Commons use agreement that gave away the public interest should be renegotiated. Why should the public and private sector be responsible for the financing of this expensive amenity? A condition for acquisition of the Super Bowl was the exclusive availability of parkland that the Downtown East Commons will occupy, and there will be other events that the public will be excluded from. The Vikings and the MFASA will pay no rent whenever they use the park, and they will keep every penny of all the concessions whenever they use it. The billionaires benefit at taxpayers' expense. The renegotiation of the Downtown East Commons use agreement needs to be placed back on the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee Agenda. City Council File Number 1501045 states, quote, "Staff is directed to explore the desirability and feasibility of reopening the park use agreement between the city and MFASA." It also, unquote, "It also says regarding this item, quote, 'Staff shall report back to the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee,' unquote, at the next Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee. However, at the next committee meeting on December 1st, I was looking for it but could not see the item on the agenda. It is my understanding that if staff is unprepared to present a mandated report, it is still placed on the agenda as postponed. By failing to comply with the directive, staff is abrogating its mandated responsibility. Please place this item back on the committee agenda where it belongs." Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda Hare, followed by Anne Myers Welsh. Ms. Hare?
Hi, my name is Yolanda Hare. I live at 1400 Washburn. I am here to express my opposition to the amendments, in particular, the amendment that taxpayers pay $605,000 for safety and accessibility for the 4th Precinct. I was there almost every day of the protest, which means that I was there when the police pepper sprayed us. I was there when they beat people with billy clubs. My hands were beat with billy clubs. The activities that are their behavior was so egregious that the Department of Justice is investigating them. I was also there the night of the shooting, and I was calling for the police. I was calling out for someone to come out of the station and to help the people, the shooting victims, and they stayed in there for 20 minutes and then came out and pepper sprayed people. Those sort of people do not deserve to be rewarded with an extra $605,000. You know who needs $605,000 extra? The citizens of North Minneapolis. It could go into a community center. It could go into our streets. It could go into developing. It could go into dealing with the incredible inequity that exists in North Minneapolis in particular, in communities of color. It's very clear that the Minneapolis Police Department already has plenty of money that they use on weapons, chemical, and otherwise, and they don't need any more money, and they don't, and they're not going to get any more of my money.
Anne Myers Welsh?
She gave me her...
Okay, that's fine. Would you give us your name and your address, please?
My name is Rod Adams. I live at 310 8th Street Southeast, and I'm here in opposition of the amendment to give MPD, specifically 4th Precinct, $605,000 to fortify the building. What I'd like to say, like, for a long time, it's been said that Minneapolis was one bullet away from being Ferguson, and that day, that day has passed, that bullet has been shot. We have like the worst racial economic disparities in the country, worse than Mississippi, worse than any other state in the country. worse than any other state in the country. Now, unemployment rate in Minnesota for whites is less than 3%, for blacks is over 50%, and I'm sure you know this. So to fathom placing $605,000 inside the 4th precinct to fortify a building that doesn't need to be fortified, a building that should be a community center, is outrageous. During the occupation, the people who stood out there during the cold, in the face of oppression by the police, we made a community. There were people out there who made lifelong friends. There was people out there who gained services they wouldn't have had the ability to gain before. There was people out there who, like, their lives were changed forever by the experiences. We call for the city to turn the police station not into a fort, but into a community center for the people of North Minneapolis. Our community needs more resources, not more policing. $605,000 could do so much for the North Side of Minneapolis. We, speaking as community, and you guys on the city council, need to envision a transformative justice model that will provide real justice for our community, and we also need to think about alternatives to the traditional police system. We must address the mental health, education, employment needs of the community. We must make investments in education, affordable housing, mental health services, restorative justice programs, and higher wages. Those are vital to building community.
Mr. Adams, can you wrap up, please?
I'm wrapping up.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. $605,000 to militarize the 4th precinct will not make the community safer. It will continue to drive a rift between the community and the police. We... The police have no reason to fear the community. We have a reason to fear the police. The reason I'm saying this is because for too long, have people of color walk the streets of Minneapolis shaking every time they see red and blue lights flashing, and that must change. So...
Can you wrap up, please?
I'm gonna wrap up. Thank you, Barb. What I'm saying is, the thing we must focus on right now is not taking that $605,000 to fortify the 4th precinct. We need to take that $605,000 and place it in a community policing plan. We don't need MPD in our neighborhoods. The community can police themselves.
Your time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seth Levitt, followed by Fred Moser. Mr. Levitt?
Hello. My name is Seth Levitt. I live at 3607 21st Avenue South. I'm in the 13th Ward. This is... I've lived in Minneapolis for about 40, 45 years. This is the second time I've come to a city council meeting. I'm not well versed in how the council works, but I feel I want to make a comment. I have been informed that there somehow or other, some money has been found to fortify the 4th precinct. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I've been told. I don't know how to find out that information. It's not on any of these papers. But if that is the case, I don't think that the 4th precinct is in any danger, and I don't think it needs fortification. It wasn't in danger a month and a half ago. It's not in danger now. If that $605,000 is floating around and it needs a place to go, I think there are a lot of people in this community who could give you some good ideas on better ways to spend $605,000 than fortifying the police station. Thank you.
Fred Moser, followed by Gillette West?
Good evening, folks. My name is Fred Moser. I live at 400 North 1st Street, Minneapolis. It's a privilege to speak. I just wanted to say that I don't... I oppose my property tax increase, but I really don't have any choice if I want to live here. But that's really not the reason why I'm here, is I want to bring up the whole idea of these taxes and status for these sports stadiums. Now, somewhere along the line, someone in here knows about what's going on, when the original decision was made to build the Viking Stadium without a referendum. And I fought that tooth and nail with Klobuchar and Franken and Lisa. And obviously, it went through, so I started asking some questions. I haven't lived in this country in 13 years. And what I want you folks to do tonight, when you go home, and you take the cat out of the Christmas tree, or do whatever you do, you put the kids to bed, I want you to think about your core values, because you deal with people, you deal with data, you deal with equipment, but the number one thing is people. And the decisions that you make on a daily basis affect people. I don't care if you're volunteer, if you're paid. What do you think about that? Because those are core values, and that's given in the military. Every one of you, I want you to think about that when you go home, because the feelings that I'm getting right now from being an outsider is, is I have this aura of incompetence, and it's all me, jerk. And really, the people that you're hurting, you're not hurting me, and you're not hurting yourselves, because you're gonna be gone. I'll be gone. You're hurting your children.
Gillette West, followed by Alexis Penny?
Hi, my name is Gillette West. I live at 3842 21st Avenue South in Minneapolis. I'd like to say thank you to Mayor Betsy Hodges, and thank you to the council for hearing us this evening. I'd like to speak out in opposition of the fortification of the 4th precinct. I think there are better places to spend our money. One of the places that we could spend that is by either investing it directly into the people of North Minneapolis, or even investing it in a redesign of this room so that we could have a conversation that was on equal ground between everybody that is present. The design of this room is ancient in and of itself, as it elevates the members of the city council in a physical position above the people at the audience who are seated at a position below. We need a larger room here, and we need a real conversation where we don't come and speak to people at a microphone anymore. This doesn't work, and it's caused the situation that we are currently in. Everyone on that side is in a position above, and we need to live in an equal society. Symbols matter. One of the symbols that exists is the 4th precinct building. It exists as a symbol of superiority and power over the people of that neighborhood, and it's time that they came down to an equal level. It's not fair. People... White people need to acknowledge their position of privilege and step back to allow the people in that community to speak for themselves, because they're quite capable of doing that. They're capable of policing their own neighborhoods. They're capable of building their own neighborhoods, and we have to assist them in doing so. So I'd like to start with taking that money and giving it to the people of North Minneapolis, not to the 4th precinct, not to the, you know, police union. I mean, if you don't get real here, we're not gonna have a community anymore. This community's gonna turn inside out and just rip itself apart, and it's not that black people or people of color are gonna tear the community apart. It's the white people that are causing this. Let's get that straight right now. Thank you very much.
Alexis Penny, followed by Marcus Mills, please. Mr. Penny?
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Alexis Penny, 2430 Logan Avenue North. All right, so everybody's here for, you know why. But I also wanted to say thank you guys so much for putting the $10 million into the Affordable Housing Trust. That was legitimate. I also wanted to say that I respect people wanting to fund the Upper Harbor Terminal, but I still don't think taking away neighborhood money is the way to do that. And obviously, I don't think presenting this money to the police department is a good use of our money either. In fact, I'm gonna say something that I may regret, but I'm gonna say it nonetheless, which is I feel like this policy is a capitulation to the status quo in simply not listening or hearing the needs of community members. People spoke very eloquently before me, so I probably don't need to, because they've done it. They've done it so well. But what I want to do, see in my community, is something that my friend Kendra Call said to me. I want to see... I would like to see a peace, prosperity, and poverty package. And that basically means investing in economic justice in North Minneapolis, and connecting us and providing access. You know, I'm a big advocate for bicycle infrastructure, but in addition to that, I want to see us tackle things like soil, water, and air quality in North Minneapolis. I don't want to see industry on my river, and I want to see us take seriously development in North Minneapolis. I don't want to see gaps taking place with respect to any type of network or system or development. I want to see it happen now, not 30 years from now.
Marcus Mills, followed by Roxanne O'Brien?
My name is Marcus Mills. I live in the Marcy Holmes neighborhood at 309 6th Street Southeast. I have a few remarks. I'm an outreach and inclusion officer for the Democratic Party here in Minnesota. So it should come as no surprise that democracy and inclusion are quite important to me. I'm on the board of my neighborhood association. I maintain amenable relationships with a number of my city's council. And this amendment to darken our streets and strengthen those that our recent decisions and recent horrors dictate most need watching caught me off guard and came to my consciousness mere hours ago. I come to speak here unprepared, but I don't feel so bad since, as I understand it, many on this body were as in the dark as I was. I was going to come here tonight anyway, to thank this body for its decision to support our mayor and our clean energy partnership, but now I must express my disappointment. The people need help. They need support, responsiveness, fairness, trust, and courage from their leaders. Not secrecy, not fear. Thank you.
Thank you. Roxanne O'Brien, followed by Patlin Lawrence?
My name is Roxanne O'Brien, and you guys know me well. You actually elected me to be on your CAC group. I'm also a Bush Fellow and a mother of three children, and I've lived in Minneapolis almost all my life. I wanted to basically say I am in opposition of the way that you guys are forming this budget, especially for giving more money to people who really don't deserve it right now. Again, I'm gonna use my time to call action to the public right now. There's a new collaboration out called the Department of Public Work, and it is a collective centering collaboration and action through the creation of culture using art to examine And I would like to amplify this call to action, because you guys can't seem to get it together in the city. Did you know that you are entitled to know what your elected officials say in the course of their work? Even about you and your neighbors, it's called a data practices request. Join us as we hold the city accountable for its botched handling of the 4th precinct shutdown and make them hand over critical data. There is power in numbers. The more of us that submit our data request forms, the harder it will be for the city to ignore us. They should know and will know that people are watching. You will be able to fill out your data practice request form on the spot at City Hall. We will collect copies for you or print it out and bring it in, filled out. We're gonna do this 9:00 AM this Friday, the 11th, on the third floor at the City Clerk's Office, Room 304. I just want to make it clear that we are coming.
Patlin Lawrence, followed by Tyrone Williams. Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Patlin Lawrence, 36 South 9th Street, and I just want to speak in opposition to the funding to fortify the 4th precinct. I think that it was a horrible thing that you guys allowed to happen last week. It really showed how un-American our political figures have become in our society, when we have people who are exercising their constitutional rights, out there voicing their dissent and protest, or then taken away like this was Nazi Germany or some place where they don't value human rights. And that's something that this council, we really need to look at, valuing the human rights of all of the citizens in the city of Minneapolis. That additional money, just like others have said, could go to many other things, but I think my recommendation to you all would be to have a conversation with the community over there in North Minneapolis. Getting people together, don't be afraid of the community. I know, you know, one person commented about the structure and how things are set, and that's kind of a wall. It's like a block. It's kind of where you're setting up, where you're the authority figures, but your power and authority comes from us, the people. That's where it comes from. It doesn't come from you to us. It comes from us to you. So come to us and talk to us in the community, and find out what are the real issues that are going on and how you really can solve it, and then implement what you hear. So often, you do have listening sessions, but you never implement the recommendations that people from the community give, and that's what needs to be done. That's where you're gonna see the change, because I'm gonna tell you, people are fed up with their public officials, and, you know, things in this country, they're getting to a violent place. And, you know, you know, I would be... If I was on your end, on your side, I would definitely be listening to the community and be concerned for my safety and well-being, because there are people who, once they get sick and tired, they're sick and tired, and you never know what people will do when they feel like they have no other options. And so it's my recommendation to you that you listen to the community, that you get people together, hold a convention, hold some kind of session where you can hear, let people air their vent, vent, air their angers. You know, I served as a board chair of the council on Black Minnesotans. People came to us all the time and vented and yell and rant and rave. You don't like it, but you know what? If you're in that position, you have to take it. That's what you signed up for. So that's what you should do. Go talk to the community and make that change that they want to see. Thank you.
Tyrone Williams, and I apologize, I haven't been calling people's number. I'm sorry about that. Mr. Williams, your number 16. Number 17 is Lee Samuelson. So, Mr. Williams?
Hello. Tyrone Williams, 701 Elwood Avenue North, Minneapolis. Longtime, fourth generation resident, community activist and so on. I'm in opposition of the budget you guys are pursuing today, because it just doesn't make any sense. I didn't come up here with any statistics or any printouts. I'm talking directly from the heart, as I look into some of you guys' eyes and see how you... Whatever you're doing behind your little desks back there, whatever. I just want to say this. It is crazy that you guys do not care about black people in the city of Minneapolis. You guys do not care. It's very clear. Yeah, take the $600,000 and go put it over in your community. Go put it somewhere else, because we don't want it there. I'm in complete opposition for it, and it's sad to see that certain people that were there, were supposed to be there. Mr. Yang, Ms. Hodges, have a certain organization from the North Side community single-handedly got you in, and we still held your back on the whole Pointe Gate thing and all that, so we ain't gonna get into that. But it's sad that I look at you guys and really know that you guys don't care. You don't care about black people. And if you want to reinforce that precinct, you'll have another Ferguson. You'll have another Baltimore. Are you ready for that? Are you ready for that? It costs you guys $750,000 to remove us for what, three hours? How long did it take to remove us? Three hours? Great job. Where'd that money come from? Put the money back into the community. Mayor, if you had a half-black son, how would the police treat him? If he lived in North Minneapolis and dribbled his basketball down Broadway with his friends, how would they treat him? Think about that. Think about that, all of you guys.
Lee Samuelson, number 17, followed by Erna Landrum, number 18, please. Mr. Samuelson?
Address?
Yes, please.
2836 18th Avenue South, Ward 9. Yeah, President Johnson, yeah, I do trust the mayor's budget crafting expertise, and I'm glad to see the LED streetlight funding as part of the budget, since burnt-out streetlights are a specific safety concern for my neighborhood organization, and XL Energy has already put forth a significant investment... forth a significant investment proposal. So it's great to see the city reciprocate. I'm also glad to see the multilingual communications in the budget and would like to reiterate that the Clean Energy Partnership is a good start and it's ongoing work is important. And I did find it a bit difficult to find information about any intended amendments brought forth tonight, which is my main concern. And I'm hoping that they're not like any plans to introduce major changes to the budget after all opportunity for a public weigh-in has elapsed, since those are things that should have been introduced at a previous budget markup hearing. Though I have no proof that this might be happening, I find it inappropriate for elected officials to keep amendments secret from the public and other council members. And we should at least have the opportunity to weigh in, or we should have the opportunity to organize the community to weigh in on specific plans. Overall, a budget is a moral document where both the content and process have serious moral implications. And a vote in favor of a surprise last-minute budget amendments anticipated to be unpopular would be a vote against transparency in the democratic process. I do want the municipal government to have the funding that it needs to meet the city's climate action plan goals and racial equity goals because I look up to the city level of government to provide much-needed political leadership on those priorities. Thank you.
Number 18, Erna Landrum, and number 19, Ashley Sartorius.
I'm actually going to be speaking for number 18. My name is Siobhan O'Johnson. Good evening. I first like to say that I am addressing the issues with the breach and the betrayal between the community, the MBD, and elected officials, that they are supposed to be paid to protect and serve. Being a product of North Minneapolis, having dedicated all my life, my education, and my professional experiences to creating a space of equity and inclusion for all the inhabitants of Minneapolis, specifically for those in North Minneapolis. We do not need more fences. We need more bridges to create access for the many inhabitants of North Minneapolis. I was one of the women who was forcefully and aggressively removed from the vestibule with my students, and that still has not been properly addressed. And multiple lies were said in CNN and WCCO regarding my behavior there that day. I really would hope that you are going to invest, if you're going to invest anything, invest in people like me. Invest in people who come from this community and come back to this community and who believe in this community. We are worth it. We do not need more fences. We need bridges, and you have the power to do so, and we are here to hold you accountable to that. Thank you.
Ashley Sartorius, number 19, and 20 is Andy Tim, it looks like.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ashley Sartorius. Many brilliant people have already spoken here today and shared a lot of our community wisdom, so I'll try not to reiterate their amazing points. I want to remind you that the people who have spoken and the people who have filled this room represent hundreds and thousands of us who have voted you into your positions And those of us who could make it here today are those of us who could come to this last-minute surprise $605,000 jab at community justice. So we might be, just like multiply this by if the word had gotten out and if people didn't have jobs and if people didn't have families and if people could just spend all their time here talking to you about what we do want and what we don't want. I want you to hear me when I tell you that I am tired, that we are tired. I've been taking off work and sleep. We've been taking off time with our families. We've been taking off self-help, all of this stuff to clean up the trauma and crimes against humanity that officers at the 4th Precinct perpetrated on peaceful protesters as they were engaged in their First Amendment right to peaceful assembly. Many of us have elected many of you on the platform, your platform of equity. This is our money that we have entrusted to you not to buy weapons against us, but to help our communities thrive. I'm asking you to use my money, to use our money, to do the equity work that you have pledged to do, so that I and the rest of us here can finally go back to work, can go back to sleeping, can go back to strengthening the community in whatever ways we are good at, instead of wasting our time cleaning up the mess of racism and oppression. Thank you.
Number 20, Andy Tim.
Oh, yeah, he gave me a spot, number 20.
All right. Your name, please, and address.
My name is Michael McDowell with Black Lives Matter Minneapolis.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your address.
Swag, swat.
Sir? Sir?
My name is Michael McDowell with Black Lives Matter Minneapolis.
Your address, please.
Oh, it's 3611th Avenue South.
Thank you.
Cool. So first off...
So are you speaking for Mr. Tim? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, yes. He gave me a spot.
All right.
So first off, I just want to say I want to commend Lisa Bender, Rock With You, Alondra Condon, Cam Gordon, Elizabeth Glidden, that's about it. But anyways, I don't know what y'all are doing. Y'all are not serving the people like the folks who put you in office, like especially Betsy, the ones who threw down, who did countless hours knocking on the doors for you, myself, a Black Minneapolis or Minneapolitis, whatever the hell you want to call it. You know, a person who was on the doors for you, threw down for you, you aren't creating policies and moving in a way that's, you know, for me or people who look like me. So I just don't get it. And in Minnesota, we're like second to the nation when it comes to racial disparities, but you all are spending money to fortify a police precinct? So, you know, Black people, you say we're at the bottom of healthcare, housing, employment, but you're not addressing any of these issues, any of these issues. You're worried about landscaping. You're worried about police safety. Why are we worried about police safety when they're supposed to be protecting us? They're supposed to be protecting us, so what narrative is that creating? We need to protect the police. We need to fortify the police. What is that going to do? Nothing. And so I just want to say that a lot of y'all are not going to be sitting in these seats pretty soon. Like, you are going to be dethroned because you're not for the people. And we can reiterate what Tyrone said, what Kanye said, like, you know, like, this council and a lot of y'all do not care about Black people, and you're not showing it. There's been no statements about Black Lives Matter. It hasn't been in your steps. So the folks who put you in office are going to dethrone you because we're tired of this stuff, like, seriously. So that's all I got to say, so.
Next, we have number 21, King Demetrius Pendleton, Pendleton, I think, and then number 22, Claudio Rivera. Mr. Pendleton? Is he here? Why don't we go to Mr. Rivera then? And if Mr. Pendleton comes in, he can speak next. Mr. Rivera.
Hi, my name is Claudio Rivera. I'm at 3222 Dupont Avenue North, here for the second time again. I thank you. Earlier, there was the talk about the initiative that would, it's basically, I think, $300,000 or so is going to fund this training that is supposed to improve our policing, but as I said earlier, and it's not going to cut it. One day of implicit bias training is not going to cut it. It takes a lot longer to undo the white supremacy that is built into this system. So I want to, if it's not clear, I oppose the renovations at the 4th Precinct as it was put by the press release that was put out two hours ago. So I want to talk about democracy, as other people have touched on, that's not democracy. You don't put a surprise amendment two hours before a public hearing. And in fact, if I had not been paying attention to social media, there's no way I would have known, right? So I think I honestly feel like you guys were counting on people not knowing, because then this hearing would not have been able to talk about that, and it would have just gotten passed, and $600,000 to do this thing. That's not democracy. And neither is holding a secret public meeting with very short notice with hand-selected constituents to give the media the appearance that people were in support of closing the 4th Precinct shutdown. Right? I, like, when I talk to the community, when I go to community meetings, I don't see what I saw on TV that day or at that press conferences. Like, those are very different-looking press conferences, if you know what I'm saying. Like, the community has spoken. The community is very clear. They wanted, they did not want the precinct shut down. They wanted justice for tomorrow, still do. And you guys have got to start listening to the real people that are here also and not just the secret, the ones at the secret meetings.
Can you wrap up, please?
That's all I've got to say. Black Lives Matter, and I hope they matter to you.
Next, number 23, Jeremiah Bay, and then number 24, Nikima Levy-Pounds. Mr. Bay. Is he here? I thought I saw him before. Ms. Nikima Levy-Pounds, oh, here's Mr. Bay, okay.
So I was outside doing some work. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Cool, cool. I'm actually not so much trying to address the council...
Would you give your name and address?
My name is Jeremiah Ellison, and I live at 3638 Eleventh Avenue South. But I was born and raised in North Minneapolis, still work over in North Minneapolis. And so I have some concerns that aren't necessarily for the council specifically, so I'm going I think that, how's everyone doing? I think that one of the things that bothers me about what's happening tonight is that I'm like almost concerned, there's so much like, is that the adding of the 4th Precinct thing that they're trying to do tonight is, to me, seems like a red herring. It's completely inappropriate. It's antagonistic to the community. And like, they're purely doing that to hide all of the other nefarious things that I think are going to be on the chopping block tonight. So I want, like, I think that we need to keep an eye on this past tonight. We need to keep an eye on this tonight because, you know, to me, it's unacceptable. I think I know a lot of the people personally or have met a lot of people personally on the council. And one of the things that I feel like I have learned is that as much as a nice smile and a nice handshake is, somebody will shake your hand, kiss your baby, and slit your throat at the same time. And so on an interpersonal level, I hope everybody on the council well in health and life, all of that. But we have got to start to unmask some of the things that they're putting up in front of us. I think that this 4th Precinct BS that they're trying to shove down our throats, that they're trying, is a wall. I mean, it's a terrible thing in and of itself, but it's also a wall to hide everything else that I think that they're putting out, that they're going to be putting forth. And the fact that they're going to hold a hearing based on basically conjecture, when we don't even know what they've cut yet, what they have in store for us yet. And so that's really all I've got to say. I want us all to keep a close eye on what actually happens at this meeting tomorrow behind closed doors. What do they actually have in store for the city? Are they actually going to try to shove this thing down our throats or not? Because tonight feels like a ruse, and I don't like being played, especially by my elected officials, so, thank you.
Excuse me a second. And then number 25 is Raisha Williams. Next, Ms. Levy-Pounds, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nikima Levy-Pounds. I live at 2901 Lindell Avenue North, so I am a proud North Side resident. I am also, and I'm in your ward, Blong. I am here tonight, I'm the president of the Minneapolis NAACP, although I'm not speaking in that capacity because I've had elected officials and other so-called community leaders trying to come after my title. But what they don't understand is I'm not ruled by a title. I'm ruled as a servant of the Most High God, and that's how I'm speaking tonight. We are sick and tired of the injustices that our people have had to endure in the city of Minneapolis. We are tired of seeing a budget that is focused very heavily on public safety while we have double-digit unemployment in the city of Minneapolis for African-Americans and other people of color. That is completely unacceptable, especially when our public safety is being jeopardized by an out-of-control Minneapolis Police Department, something that you all have known about for years. When we go out into the community, we collect story after story after story of African-American men and boys and children who are constantly being harassed and abused and criminalized by the Minneapolis Police Department. And then when something happens like the 4th Precinct occupation, we act like it's such a surprise. Well, Professor Jason Sol and I told you all months ago that we were one incident away from becoming the next Ferguson. And the only reason that this city did not burn to the ground was because of that occupation outside of the 4th Precinct. We served as a container for the raw emotions of people of the city who were sick and tired of being sick and tired, sick and tired of elected officials and those running for office knocking on our doors but not delivering upon the promises that they ran on. Well, enough is enough. Stop running for office if you're not going to do your jobs. Create jobs, particularly for African-American men in the city of Minneapolis. It should not take an occupation for them to have a sense of purpose in our society. You all can do better than this, and we expect better than this. Thank you.
Number 25, Raisha Williams, and number 26 is Angela Connolly.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I'm Raisha Williams, and I reside at 701 Elwood Avenue in North Minneapolis.
Is this on?
This is what, this is what police protection is for African-Americans in Minneapolis, particularly in North Minneapolis. This brother is cut from his pelvic up to the top of his stomach because Minneapolis Police did their job or not. I am here to oppose the increase of budget to allow an expansion for the 4th Precinct Police Station. It's not going to happen. We're not going to allow it. And if you do it today, be careful because your next steps can be your last. I want to make clear that there are so many other inequities that that money can go towards. We have told Betsy Hodges that we want an African-American Economic Development Center in North Minneapolis for African-American business owners, which would provide actual money, hmm, money for businesses to begin. We want the $605,000 to go towards resurrecting a beautiful community center in North Minneapolis on one of the empty public lots that sits on Plymouth Avenue and/or you're going to give us the 4th Precinct, one or the other. We are sick and tired of being in fear for our lives, for our children's lives, for our grandparents' lives, for our community lives. If you say you live in Minneapolis and you are part of the Greater Twin Cities, then stand with us or stand aside because we are coming. I want you, unnoticed, Blong Gang, that this will be your last term. So enjoy your petty conversations, your silly agreements, and your mishandlings of my community for the very last time. You are unnoticed, sir, and anybody who sits with him in solidarity will be unnoticed too. Watch your steps because we are watching. I want you to know that we are paying close attention to your CD agreements, and we are not going to allow it to happen any longer. Black lives.
Black lives.
Black lives. Get ready, we coming. 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 Yep.
Angela Connolly is next, number 26. And after her, Nick Harper, number 27, please.
Hi, I'm back. My name is Angela Connolly. I live at 4431 Pleasant Avenue. I am vehemently opposed to the amended budget of $600,000 plus for the 4th Precinct. And we talk about accountability and transparency, but they're not just buzzwords, so I'd like to have some accountability right now. In a 2013 article for the MinPost, Mayor Hodges stated that she felt tension as she walked on the North Side, and she felt tension as she walked downtown. She felt tension as she walked through the first floor of City Hall as officers come in and out. I'm sure you felt that same tension as you showed up at the 4th Precinct. You also stated that there's a legacy of brutal oppression, of... You also stated that there's a legacy of brutal oppression of people of color in this country and in the state and in this city. Last year, you wrote a letter to the community and opal letters to the community in which you stated that we share goodwill. So I'm here to share goodwill with you and remind you that you stated if that, if I see you or the chief of police or anyone else in a position of responsibility taking steps with which I disagree, steps that I think will not work as intended or may unintentionally set us back, I invite you to assume that first I have misunderstood. Mayor Hodges, you have misunderstood. If you support Blong Yang's proposal to spend $600,000 at the 4th Precinct, you are misunderstood. That money needs to be reinvested into the community, into North Minneapolis. I live in South Minneapolis, you called for One Minneapolis. So from South to North, that money needs to be reinvested into the community. I implore you not to accept this amended budget, not to accept the proposal from Blong Yang, Blong Yang, and do what you stated that we should do, which has come to you in goodwill and in goodwill and the fashion of goodwill. That money, as you've heard from us all today, we represent thousands of people from the South Side of Minneapolis to the North Side, Southeast Minneapolis, Northeast Minneapolis, that money does not need to go to the 4th Precinct, it needs to go to the people who are in this room and the people that the people in this room represent. Thank you.
Number 27 is Nick Harper, and number 28 is Linda Wanty. Thank you very much. Mr. Harper?
Hi, my name is Nick Harper. I live at 3023 Lindell Avenue South. I do not live in North Minneapolis, and I'm a white male, so my perspective is limited, but I do agree with what many people have already stated here today, and I do support them in what they've already stated. But I do have a couple of comments about the budget and the proposed amendments that were recently announced. As towards the First Amendment, that council member Yang is going to propose regarding the additional trainings for officers. I think that's important, and I think it's absolutely necessary that our officers receive better training about concerning procedural justice and bias in particular. Although I also agree with what others have already stated that that amendment is not going to be enough and that more is necessary, that you're gonna have to do better than that. I also want to address the Second Amendment, which I oppose. I agree with many, as they've stated, to oppose the additional $605,000 for safety and access to the 4th Precinct, although I really questioned what safety and access means, considering it was not defined or clarified. This is a new amendment that hasn't really been studied or pronounced very well. I saw a media release earlier today that was backdated towards yesterday, that's tacky, don't do that. In addition to that, I think that if you really wanted to provide safety and access to the 4th Precinct, there are better ways to do it than providing it directly through the Police Department. You can also invest in the Department of Civil Rights, including hiring additional civilian investigators or policy studies for improving police culture and accountability. Thank you.
Linda Wanty, number 28, followed by Andy Pearson, number 29.
Yeah, my name is Linda Wanty. I live at 2412 Ferrin Place in Minneapolis, and I came here basically to hear about a budget, but I'm getting the impression that this is a Black Matters forum, and I'm very upset with the fact that these people, I believe, are going for what they need to protest for, and I agree, freedom of speech is a great thing, but I also think that there are a lot of people in my neighborhood who are afraid of Black Matters and won't speak up, and they are afraid that they're going to put the Police Department on hostage like they did for 18 days, which is very upsetting to a lot of people who are not here today. And I don't know why these people are using this as a forum. This is supposed to be about streetlights and street signs and-- It's not supposed to be about race.
Please, excuse me, excuse me, let's be polite and let the speaker speak, please. Thank you.
Well, I just, I wanted to say that there are people who are supporting you, as well as the community is not all black, and it's not, there's Asians and there's other people besides these people, and the police are afraid--
Please, 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 please.
You're being racist. Why aren't we doing, why aren't we having our Lives Matter? Why aren't we-- Well, I have nothing else to say--
Andy Pearson, number 29, please. Number 29, please. Number 29, Andy Pearson.
Not being aggressive.
Number 29, Andy Pearson, please. Andy Pearson, followed by Candace Montgomery, number 30.
Thank you so much. Hello, my name is Andy Pearson, 2629 18th Avenue South. Now, it's speakers like the previous that reinforce the need for Black Lives Matter. And some moments like this one make me so fucking embarrassed to be white, my God! What is that? All right, returning back down. The purpose of me being here today is to say I completely and totally and utterly oppose the $605,000 that would go to security and accessibility for police and community. Now, let's note the order of those words, right? Security first, accessibility later, police first, community later. Does this fit a pattern? Also, do you know how you get security and accessibility for a police precinct? It starts with not killing people, all right? It starts with not killing your community members. Can we get that straight? I also want to say that if that $605,000 was not allocated there, we could fund all the LED streetlights and a whole lot of other good stuff. I also support and thank you for the money for the community energy and for the solar streetlights program. In the rest of my time here, I'm gonna talk about a few things that I have seen, all right? I did not grow up on the North Side, I grew up more sheltered, all right? I had not seen friends of mine being maced in the face, I had not seen cops dumping out the milk that people had brought so that it could clear the mace from people's eyes, clear the tear gas. I hadn't seen bulldozers used to clear an encampment, I sure as hell hadn't heard white supremacists shoot unarmed protesters in the street and then see the cops take 20 minutes to respond to that. Those are things that I saw for the first time in the encampment at the 4th Precinct, all right? I want to say one last thing. I want to say one last thing. This is incredibly important that you get this right, because look at the signal that it's sending to your community. I honestly can't figure out whether council member Yang and other council members proposing this are so out of touch or are playing at something or just trying to be mean. You know, what are you trying to do with us? What are you trying to do? What's the message that you're trying to send here? Think about that very carefully. Thank you so much.
Candace Montgomery, number 31, followed by Nikki Mabry, number 32. Ms. Montgomery?
All right, thank you. My name is Candace Montgomery, 3032 10th Avenue South. Shout to the South Side. You know, I think folks have said what I would say and will continue to say what I would say, but I just want to echo it again, you know, in case like 80 corporations call you tomorrow and give you some other opinion. So I just want to re-say again that this is shameful. It's shameful that folks have to be out here tonight, it's shameful that we all have to spend time away from our families ensuring that you actually create a budget that protects us, that serves us. This is a shame. This is not democracy. We voted you in for a reason, because not all of us can just sit around and do this. This is your job. We all have jobs. It's time that you invest in us and not the police. That's simple. I'm not only opposed to the amendments to add $605,000 more dollars to police to fortify, renovate, create a fortress, whatever you want to call it, I'm opposed to any budget that would spend this much on police and not on the worst in the nation racial disparities, worst in the nation. And they have continued to gotten worse since you've gone in office, Betsy. It's time that you invest in black communities, it's time that you invest in young black people, it's time that you invest in the queer, young, black, and trans folks downtown. I invite you to sit down with those folks to craft a budget that's actually gonna work for us. Lastly, I think you can already see this, but this has happened in a matter of hours. We have a whole year and a half to prepare for 2017. This is about you standing on the right side of history.
Nikki Mabry, and then followed, number 32, and then followed by Molly Glasgow, number 33. Welcome.
Madam President, City Council, 10 years ago, I moved to North Minneapolis fleeing a violent rural Wisconsin. And the North Side took me in and they saved my life. And I will never turn my back when the North Side is in danger. Y'all know me. You've seen me on your doors, you've seen me on your convention floors. Betsy, you sat on my couch and you promised me a vision of equity. One Minneapolis. Pepper spray and billy clubs in our ribs and violence in our streets? You lied. You lied. This is not the one Minneapolis we were promised. As you've seen me on your convention floors, as you've seen me on the doors before working my ass off for an equity vision I believed in, trust me today. These are just a few of my friends. Many of us spent nights on the floor in the 4th Precinct. We've been pepper sprayed, we've been bullied, we've been pushed around, and we will not stand for this any longer. Should you vote for this amended $605,000, a disinvestment in the North Side, you can bet, you will see us on your convention floors, you will see us at your fundraisers organizing and divestment, you will see us on the doors when you are primaried. We are done. Don't do this. We can do better.
Number 33 Molly Glasgow, followed by number 34 Michael Jupiter, looks like Michael Jupiter. Ms. Glasgow?
My name is Molly Glasgow. I live at 4326 Humboldt Avenue North. I'm the Vice President of MetraIBA, the Twin Cities Independent Business Alliance. I'm excited to hear that money was found in the city budget. That means there's an opportunity to make a substantial investment in community and economic development. You have heard from many community members tonight about what is important to invest in and the opportunities before us. One of those options would be to support small and independent businesses in our city, be it existing businesses who are strong and active hubs in the community, or by supporting emerging business owners and entrepreneurs. There are many examples of how to do this from around the country. One, from Salt Lake City, is to help business owners buy their buildings. Imagine that significant investment in community strength and wealth. Small businesses are ones that are doing the hiring, creating quality jobs, and are more likely to be environmentally friendly, taking advantage of existing infrastructure. Small businesses give more to local organizations, which creates a multiplier effect for the money and makes it stretch further. Millions more will stay in Minneapolis if we do more to support these businesses and create more opportunities for potential business owners. We have such an opportunity right now because Minneapolis is on top of so many lists. We've been featured in numerous top 10 lists, though we still continue to be a city with a great amount of economic and racial disparity. So let's take the momentum for how we are successful and run with it in a creative and positive way to make sure that we improve the quality of life for everyone who lives in Minneapolis, including everyone in this room. Let's make Minneapolis a leader in racial and economic equity.
Next, I have number 34 Michael Jupiter, followed by Kimberly Danicker, number 35. Number 34, Mr. Jupiter? Then let's go to Ms. Kimberly Danicker, number 35, followed by Mel Reeves, number 36.
Hello, my name's Kim Danicker. I live at 4404 15th Avenue South here in Minneapolis, and I want to give a shout-out to Black Lives Matter Minneapolis for putting this up on Facebook so that I knew to be here tonight. And I didn't have planned on my way over here, I didn't have anything planned to say, but here's what I want to share with you, is that I went over to the 4th Precinct today because I wanted to see if those barricades have been taken down yet, and they hadn't been, so I got out my cellphone camera and I started taking pictures of it, because you know what? This is just bizarre. It's bizarre that it looks like there's like Gestapo tactics going on in North Minneapolis, that I need to go out and I need to photograph this, because this is like an unusual event in my life. And while I was over there, I observed that there is a barber across the street whose business is suffering because you guys decided that you needed to put up barriers to block the entrance to his parking lot from off of Plymouth Avenue. That's what I saw. I ran into a few people out there and I chatted with them, because I'm an extrovert and that's what extroverts do, we make friends everywhere we go. And I met a woman who was on her way to the funeral home to pick up some things because her second of two babies had been killed. Both of her children have been killed. And as we conversed, I learned that she can't afford $550 for a headstone for her child. So if we have $605,000 that we can put into fortifying the 4th Precinct building, whatever that means, maybe we can take that and maybe we can pitch in to help her buy a tombstone for her baby. Maybe we can put it into small businesses on the North Side so that people can flourish economically, so that they can provide for themselves and for their families, so they don't feel like they need to go out and compete with their neighbors and their brothers and sisters for money that doesn't exist in the economy. And then finally, here's what I have to say-- Hold on, I got five seconds left-- is that I went over to one side of the building where part of the sidewalk was barricaded off by a fence, and so I got out my cellphone, and I'm standing right next to the entrance to the parking lot for the squad cars, and I noticed that there was a police squad car facing the street, and there was somebody in the driver's seat, and so I looked over and I just smiled and I gave a friendly wave, as I do. Goodwill, that's all it was. And this officer got out of the car, and so I said to her, "Oh hey, you know, I wasn't flagging you down, I was just waving," you know, nothing more. She said, "What are you doing here?" I said, "I'm just taking a picture." Why not?" And she treated me like I was suspect, like I was doing something wrong, and here's the thing, if I, as a blond-haired, white woman, would be treated that way in broad daylight doing absolutely nothing wrong, I shudder to think what my black brothers and sisters on the North Side feel like if they ever get caught doing anything wrong. That is a travesty. We should not be putting money into a precinct building. $605,000? Are you kidding me? That money can be way better spent, you guys, do better.
Number 36 Mel Reeves, and next is number 37 Pete Ruse. Mr. Reeves, is he here? Mr. Reeves?
Yes. How's everybody? I'm at 1041 James Avenue North. It's always a little odd when I look across at the city council, because I've seen most of y'all and worked with y'all on different things, and most of y'all are nice people, but we're not here because you all are nice people, we're here because the system you all serve is not so nice. I think this is a teachable moment. You know, the 17 days of what we call the occupation was something that people could learn from. Ironically, on some level, the folks of the occupation did what I think the city council and the city should be doing. The poor were fed, right? The hungry were fed, some of the homeless, right, were given homes, right? We have real community, right? We have real community out there, and we're seeing that the city would have provided that. But I think this is a teachable moment, because this tells us something about representative government. See, a real representative government, we wouldn't be here. We would have to beg them to do what we want them to do. A real representative government would make sure that those police would have gotten fired, right? A real representative government would have believed my neighbors when they said a crime was committed, right? But we're here begging you all, something is wrong. Something is wrong with the type of government where we have to come and beg folks to do what's right. That shouldn't-- That shouldn't happen, folks. And I know I have a reputation as a radical, but I'm making sense. This is true. And the other thing is, if you don't agree with the people, you sure as heck shouldn't be opposing them, alright? You shouldn't be in the way. But I think also, we're here tonight, the medium is the message here. Because in the midst of all that's going on, I can't imagine that they would be talking about budgets, talking about budgets and the police. You would think there would be an emergency meeting to talk about, "How are we going to deal with our cops?", right? We keep coming back and forth. So on some level, they're telling us that maybe we're lying, maybe we're not telling the truth, right? We keep filing reports, we keep complaining, and yet, we come back over and over again. There's something wrong. I think you all have sent the wrong message here. You should be talking about, "How do we deal with those cops that killed our brother Jamar Clark?" That's what this meeting should be about. I know my time is up, thank you.
Pete Rus, number 37, followed by Ayesha Gulid, number 38. Mr. Rus.
Hi, Peter Rus. I'm representing the Minneapolis Energy Center at 324 9th Street. We recently were notified about the proposed redesign of Third with the partition bike routes. And I will submit written comments, so I won't take a lot of your time, but needless to say, as we've gone down the avenue and talked to folks, it's clear that there hasn't been really any effort on the part of the city to get some kind of collective agreements about what's going to occur there. And we would hope that, and I realize that there probably are the votes to approve this in the budget, but we would hope that there could be a directive to the staff to work with the property owners and the stakeholders in the area to get some buy-in from us. This is a very, very important corridor, and we would hope that we would have the opportunity to be engaged in the process. And it should have happened a long time ago. And again, I'll submit written comments and do appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Hashem Jonas is following Ayesha Gulid, so number 38 and number 39.
If I can have an absolute silence, it would really, I appreciate it.
Ayesha? Are you taking Ayesha's spot, sir?
No, I'm taking my own spot, 39.
38 is first, Ayesha Gulid. Thank you. Sorry if I mixed you up.
Okay.
Ms. Gulid.
My name is Ayesha Gulid, and I live on 37 20 28th Avenue South Minneapolis. And I've been at the precinct almost every single day, and I was one of the people who were arrested. I knew like deep down in my heart, what I was doing was for a good cause. And I can't just go to school and then go to work and try to pretend that my own people are not being, that my own people are being killed. I can't just live my life and not make an active change. And one Wednesday at the precinct, police attacked us protesters. And I don't want to go into details, because it's very triggering for me, but eight police officers threw me on the floor. I'm 5'3", I weigh 150 pounds, and they saw me as a threat. They threw me on the floor and dragged me by my hijab, and like, there is no way that you can justify that, okay? And I just want to say that, like, they gave me a concussion. I went to the ER and they dismissed my concerns, saying that I had a concussion. I had concussion for two weeks, my grades were suffering, and I didn't even know, I could have died, okay? Just two days ago, that I just now found out that I had a concussion. And there is no way that you can justify this and sit there while our people are dying, while they're beating up girls, me, who is, who does not even have the strength to defend herself. And I just want you guys to know what the mayor said about, when she heard this incident that happened to me, she justified it. She said that the police used their, the police were justified in beating me up. And there's just, it's just very wrong to me, and also to see other people to try to make this seem like it's an okay thing to happen, and also for the mayor, who's supposed to serve us, to try to say that it was something that was justified. That's all I have to say, but I just want you guys to know that black people are dying at the hands of police, and you can't just sit idly by and try to pretend that we're not being killed. You can't just sit there while me, who was 18 years old, I'm in high school, and got beaten by eight cops, you can't just sit there and try to pretend that there's not a problem.
Mr. Jonas, you'll be followed by number 41 Carol Becker. Mr. Jonas.
Thank you.
I still have a dream. It is a dream deeply rooted in the American dream. I have a dream that one day, this nation will rise up, live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. I have a dream that one day on the Red Hill to Georgia, the sons of former slaves and the sons of former slave owners, will they be able to sit down together at the table of brotherhood? I have a dream that one day, even the state of Mississippi, a state sweltering with the heat of injustice, sweltering with the heat of oppression, will be transformed into an oasis of freedom and justice. I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. I have a dream today. I have a dream that one day, down in Alabama, with its vicious racists, with its governor having his lips drifting with the words of interposition and nullification, one day right there in Alabama, little black boys and black girls will be able to join hands with little white boys and white girls as sisters and brothers. I have a dream today.
Mr. Jonas, can you wrap it up, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 41 Carol Becker, followed by number 42 Navel Gordon.
Oh man, you're going to make me follow Martin Luther King?
Yeah.
Knock me out here. My name's Carol Becker. Most of you have no idea who I am, and I'm totally good with that. I am on the Board of Estimate and Taxation. We set the maximum property tax levy, and we also issue debt. And so I worry about all sorts of boring things that you guys don't. And I'm here today to talk about the capital planning process, because I know it's exciting stuff, that we have a plan. We have a five-year plan about where we're going to invest money. We have a citizens committee, who is from all over the city, who review that. Their name is Capital Long Range Planning Commission, or CLIC, five-year plan. They review all the capital projects and make a recommendation to the City Council of what should be done and where we should invest money. Has this come up, the $605,000 come up in the capital long-range planning process? Nope. Nope, just dropped out of the sky. We have a planning process, and we should have been using it. If this was important, we should have come through that process, should have been reviewed, citizens would have supported it, it shouldn't have just dropped out of the sky. We do not need to militarize Minneapolis. Do not need to militarize the city. I hate what's going on. Police have to stop running this. We need to start working with the community, work together, make smart investments. What would I do with the $605,000? Park more people? Why don't we park? You know what? We don't have enough money to fix the roof. Got a video on YouTube, watching the rain come through one of the park building's roofs. We need to put that money where it will help the community. We don't need to militarize the city. Thank you very much.
Mr. Navel Gordon, number 42, and number 43 Mustafa Adam. Mr. Gordon?
My name is Navel Gordon. I work for Neighborhood Organization Change. I've been waking up every day, and what I see in my head is police lights, man. Like, this is so crazy, like, people waking up every day, you see what's going on, and you're going to say it's wrong? It is wrong, but it's only right that we get the right outcome for this. And, ain't gonna lie, when I was in North Minneapolis, every day I was out there. I wasn't out there tonight, the guy got shot, and I also knew a couple of the people that got shot, and it's like, if I, I stayed at home that night, you know what I'm saying? But I was out there every day, all day, you know what I'm saying? I kind of felt like the mayor, because everybody was walking up to me, you know what I'm saying? I'm out here every day supporting my community, doing something good, and they don't see that. They see the wrong, they see the wrong from the past. I gotta, my daughter, she's one, I gotta tell her that the police is killing people. And I know some people already told their kids that too as well. But at the end of the day, what I'm trying to say is, man, it's only right we get the best outcome. I've been in Minneapolis for like five years now. And it's just, I've been in Minneapolis five years, and I've never seen nothing like this. This is so crazy. At the end of the day, I'm not going to have to, I'm not going to have to be scared of the police. When I walk past police car, I'll be like, "Oh man, they're going to get me?", you know what I'm saying? It's like, I shouldn't be scared of the police. And for every racist cop that's out there, or cops that's killing people, the 10,000 lakes y'all go jump in each one of them, because I'm not playing, man. This is so wrong, man. And at the end of the day, I'm not in a lot of pressure right now, I'm going to keep talking. The police is wrong, and you guys need to see that. I'm sweating right now because it's hot, but I'm good.
Mustafa Adam, and then Jacob Lada, number 43, and number 44. Mr. Adam.
Team Minneapolis. I think I'm represented by Mr. Fay. I'm just guessing, because I haven't seen him representing me or anybody like me since he got elected. We don't need a green zone that's fortified as a, you know, as a green zone in Baghdad. We don't need that in Minneapolis. And to the mayor, if you do what you're doing, you'll end up like your pal in Chicago, what's his name, Ram Emanuel, whatever his name is. He's about to resign and lose his job, and if you keep supporting a corrupted police system, you will end up the same. And thank you.
Mr. Jacob Lada, number 44, and then number 45 is crossed out, so number 46 Catherine Dorr. Mr. Lada.
Jacob Lada, 11 East 36th Street. Man Hodges. 92% of language is body language. I've been watching all of your faces. I see when you look down. I see when you look up. I see when you went into affirmative with that blackmail and show compassion, right? We see a lot more than you think we see. We are a lot stronger than you think we are. My grandfather was a deputy sheriff in Oklahoma City, who extradited a Unabomber through his career. My father was a Black Panther. We grew up in a trailer park, two miles away from my grandfather's mansion, where the tennis court let us cut down bamboo stems to go fishing. Why don't you start showing your soul? Stop, stop using the costume.
Number 46 Catherine Dorr, and then number 47 John Stanley. Ms. Dorr.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Dorr, D-O-R-R. I live at 308 3rd Avenue Northeast. I'm in the third ward. I come today to oppose your 7.9% increase that I received in my property tax bill for next year. I'll make this short and sweet. In one month from today, I will be 65 years old. My tiny savings at the credit union earns less than 1%. My 401K earns 2.5% if that. For next year, my social security will have a zero zip nada cost of living increase. I have to keep paying for what I, next year, even though prices are going up for what I'm still getting. In my 32 years of working, I was lucky to get a 2% raise if that, but only in some years. Yet you ask for a 7.9% raise for the city's portion of my taxes. Sorry, I don't have my bifocals. I am not in the half of city homeowners here that are seeing a reduction in their property taxes. And overall, my 2016 property taxes are going up 9.3%. This is unsustainable. In October, two months ago, I spent the last of my savings to pay my 2015 property taxes, and next year, I really don't know where I'm going to get the money to pay my taxes. In your budget process, I understand you have to balance income versus needs and wants. Funding for city services and improvements must be balanced, must be balanced, with the citizens' ability to pay. Not all of us are benefiting from this economic recovery. Thus, I urge you, I ask you, I implore you, to consider our ability to pay, especially as senior citizens and those on fixed income, because you are driving us out of the city by making it unaffordable. Thank you for your time and for giving me an opportunity to voice my concerns, and I'll be happy to talk to you at some other time.
John Stanley, number 47, followed by number 48 Caroline Rice. Mr. Stanley.
Mayor. My name is John Stanley. I live at 3241 Minneha Avenue South, South Minneapolis. I wasn't going to speak today, because I was going to let my people speak for me, and what a fine job everybody is doing. But $605,000, I mean, couldn't you have rounded that up to maybe six and put the five somewhere else? I mean, I'm adamantly opposed to the whole 605. Another thing I wanted to say is that I've been sitting back here watching 46 people speak before me, and I'm looking at you guys, our council, our council, and I'm looking at you in the face. And most of you look like you're out there daydreaming, you're not giving the speakers the respect, they're even looking at them in the eye. When people speak to me, I look at them. You know, I think you're out there thinking more, you know, your Christmas shopping list or something. You're going to have that little meeting tonight, that little secret meeting, and it's really sad that everything that we're saying and everything that we mean is going to be for nothing, I fear. I really truly believe that, because the majority of you don't care. It's written all over your faces, and you ought to be embarrassed of yourselves.
Number 48 Caroline Rice, followed by number, oh, I go to number 51 Andrew Falstrom. Ms. Rice.
I'm Caroline Rice. Hi Barbara. I reported some mortgage fraud a long, long time ago that you prosecuted. Meanwhile, I'm going to talk to you people. Because I was hungry, and you fed me. I was cold, you kept me warm. I was on the way to my daughter's hockey game, hadn't eaten all day, and I went to just check out what was going on. This county took my five children from me when I reported abuse and fraud. People are in prison for eight and seven years. It's not about color. I've been choked. I've been shackled, I've been chained. I've been arrested without a warrant. I've been held on a concrete floor for six days and six nights. And I tried to wrap up my pillow, or blanket, use it for a pillow, they took it from me. I know your pain. People matter. Lives matter. I care. My kids care. Keep going. I'm for respect. I marched with the people the other night. I've been at Richard Sannick's fundraising party. It was a bad idea to bulldoze people's food when you're hungry. I just, I was healed when I walked up there with the people and the police officers. They were respectful too. They let the people protest, this is what we want. I'm not for disrespect, I'm not for violence. Hands are not for hurting. But I just about died laughing when I walked up, and I'm like, they were seeing, bitch give me... But I just about died laughing when I walked up and I'm like, they were seeing bitch giving me my money. And I was healed. And I just, I don't know why it struck me funny, but this, this is what we have to do. This is, this is the right thing, non-violent. Talk to the people who are gonna listen. Love wins in the end, only all the time.
Number fifty-one Andrew Falstrom, and then number fifty-two Kaliska Mon. Man. Mr. Falstrom.
Cam, Alondra, Kevin, Lisa, Elizabeth, Barb, Blong, Andrew, John, Abdi, Lisa, oh shoot, Jacob, Linnea, Betsy. I don't know you all, I'm learning your names and I'm learning how you vote. Um, I've never spoke at a city council meeting. I think that One Minneapolis is becoming a joke. It has become a slogan, and tonight we're talking about money. And when it comes down to money, reversing centuries of racism isn't gonna cost hundreds of thousand dollars, isn't gonna cost millions of dollars. We're talking about a long-term commitment to undoing what's been done. Um, and I see the proposed six hundred and five thousand dollars to create a fortress in the fourth precinct. And I also see Blong and Abdi, that you're proposing cutting fifty thousand dollars from green zones, or, um, sort of, one, um, concrete tool that's been proposed towards reducing some of the, the racial disparities in environmental racism and the toxic pollution that poisons us all. And I, I think about sort of how those things weigh. Um, proposing sort of twelve times as much money for a red militarized zone when we could be putting money into, and proposing taking away money from a green zone, which could actually help people in my neighborhood in North Minneapolis. And I think all that I have is every, most, I think everything good's been said, and I wanna echo what Nikki Mabry said, is that we'll be there, we're watching how you vote, we'll be at the fundraisers, we'll be at the convention hall, and we see what's happening on a city level, and you can see that there's rooms, like literally rooms full of people who want change and are expecting change.
Kaliska Man, uh, number fifty-two, followed by Max Power Tree. Uh, Ms. Man.
Hi, my name is Solisi Amon Price. I'm sixteen, I go to Patrick Henry High School. I work for NOC, which is Neighborhood Organizing for Change. Yeah. And I'm honestly, I'm kinda shy, so I didn't wanna come talk, but I think you guys honestly need to hear me. There should be no reason why I have to go to school for eight hours, then after that go to work, come home, do homework, go to sleep, wake up with the same routine, go back to work. You know how tired I am? Every single day, not, mostly every day, I was at, uh, the precinct. I sat there and watched my mother fall tears. What sixteen-year-old girl wants to see her mother cry? I look up to my mother. You personally, Mr. Johnson, shook my mother's hand, came to the NOC meeting and talked to my mother, and you still look like you do not care. I think it is absolutely ridiculous that, out of all of the people I'm looking at right now, to all of you, you can't change the smallest thing. All we are asking is for Minneapolis to be better, for our lives to be better. It is wrong for us to want better for ourselves? You guys teach your kids to stand up for what they believe in, to pretty much let, let people hear them. But you're telling all of us you pretty much just don't care, or showing us you don't care. That is, that is ridiculous. Do any of you have hearts? I know you guys have kids. If you see your daughter standing up here like this, getting ready to cry, I kinda wanna That is, you should all be ashamed of yourselves. Each and every last one of you, whether, I just, I can't even get the words out, like I'm so disgusted by you, like, I, I just want y'all to hear me. I want you to know that I'm not playing. If I have to come to each and every one of y'all houses and knock on your door, sing to it, sing in your window, I will. This is ridiculous. We need to change in Minneapolis, and you need to give it to us, or you will be gone.
Max Power Tree.
Uh, my name is Max Power Tree.
And then, yeah, I just, um, read the next name, please. Carlos, Carlos, uh, Zingtree, I think is, is correct. So, go ahead, please.
My name is Max Power Tree. Uh, legal name is Mary Ann Baum. Thirty-three oh one Sixteenth Avenue South. Um, so I have to say, I, I loathe the public speaking, um, but I wanted to add my one or two cents. Um, I turned around on my bus route home tonight to be here, even though I've got this big fluffy cat. She gets really cranky when I don't get home to feed her by five thirty, and I've got this leaky faucet for her nose, had to take some emergency Benadryl, which I was really lucky I had in my bag. I'm running out of room, I'm a hanky, my head hurts, blah, blah, blah. But I'm here instead of home. I'm here. Um, because this is something big, and my cat and I can put our needs aside for a little bit, because this is something really big. Like, this is historic. I'm outraged at this sham. The proposed budget amendment makes it quite clear that white supremacy is alive and well in our government. In our city government, in our city. And it's not acceptable, not acceptable. So, I hope that I don't have to door knock and phone bank to get new council members elected in twenty seventeen, because I hope you all are gonna do the right thing with this budget. No money for killer cops, no money for guns, no money for riot gear. Put the entirety of that extra money, which is our money, into the community programs and spaces on the north side, and let the investment decisions be in the hands of the people of North Minneapolis. No more of the state violence against people of color. Every one of you on the city council has blood on your hands, and you can't cover it up. We're onto you and we'll shut it down. Oh, and my cat is so mad at you, Blong Yang. Two hours notice is not democracy.
Carlos, Carlos, um, Carlos Zingtree? Sir? Excuse me, before you begin, um, that is the last name that I have, so if anyone would like to speak, um, you can, you can give Mr. Carl your name, uh, and speak.
My name is Carlos Zingtree. I live on twenty-seven Pleasant Avenue, Minneapolis. Maybe a better resolution with this picture, please. I wanted to see this picture because I do oppose the money going to the police, not only the city police, but also the park police. I think, being a resident of Minneapolis for many years, I lived for like nineteen years, and I don't see any diversity in the police department, and I don't know why our money should be invested in, in the police. While the things I'm here, I was not prepared to speak, but I, I since a lot of people are speaking from their heart, I'm gonna speak from the heart. I'm a person that lived here for many years, and I, I used to work in this organization, the Park Board. When I see that taxes are gonna, when they see, when they asking for money for our, our, our mo, from our, our house, from the, the property tax, I don't, I don't agree in that because this is one of the most racist companies I ever, I ever worked. I'm a person that is prepared here. I had a degree from the University of Minnesota. I worked as a community engagement, and I don't want my money go to departments with, it's very obsolete departments that don't, that have the most inefficient people working there, the most racist people, discriminatory people, retaliation people, and they're still there here asking for money for, from our tax residents. I don't want that, neither as for the police department from the city of Minneapolis. I strongly oppose that because as a resident, I feel motivated to be, to be here safe, to have our chance for our families, and we do not have a chance. This is very different. I, I thought the city was supposed to be a welcome city. I lived eighteen years, and I'm still struggling here to be treated with respect in all these organizations, being city of Minneapolis, state agencies or anything. Thanks so much.
Next I have number sixty-two Brianna, um, looks like Buckhalton.
Yes, Buckhalton. You need my address.
And, um, just a second, and then behind, uh, Ms. Buckhalton, uh, number sixty-three Sandra Jones. Ms. Buckhalton, yes, your address, please.
Hi, ninety-two eighty University Avenue Northwest, Minneapolis, Minnesota. I'm not from Minneapolis, but I am all for, um, well, all, all against the, the police, like the budget going to the police station, but all I have to say is, you need to deal with us now, you need to deal with our generation, and you need to do with our, deal with our youth. So, by opening community centers or things that are gonna flourish our future, it's gonna be better than having to put money into trying to protect our future, and by putting up, um, weapons and other things to try and, and jails to put us, you're not thinking about what can we do to make Minneapolis people better and to make them be have, become better in the future, you're thinking about now, but we need to be thinking about not today's satisfaction, but tomorrow. And if you're not with us, you are against us. You may not be the one pointing the gun at us, but you sitting here saying that building this new police station is gonna be okay, and that this, this budget, this money that needs, that's gonna go to that, you're saying it's fine that the police are sitting here beating us and killing us, because if you're not gonna save, if you're not taking our side and dealing with us, you are against us and you are saying that it is fine that we are dying and we, there's no equality, and that's, that's all.
Sandra Jones, and Sandra is the last person I have, um, signed up, so if anyone else would just speak, um, just go ahead, oh, I guess we have a couple more, thank you. Ms. Jones.
Hi, my name is Sandra Jones. I was NOC Neighborhood Organizer for Change. My address is thirteen oh six Zerxes Avenue North. I'm born and raised on this north side. Um, and may I state that I have no mother or father, so I was raised by the north side. Um, I just, I wasn't planning on speaking today either, but I just wanted to say, how dare you? Like, and, how dare you guys, like, just completely ignore us? Like, first it was just kill the fair scheduling bill, and then now it's, now it's, let's protect the police. Protect the police? Give six hundred thousand dollars to the police? Are y'all serious? Like, is this a joke? Is our life to you guys a joke? Is the struggles that we face on a daily basis a joke to you guys? Are we like the laughing matter, the, this One Minneapolis shit, is that a joke? Like, what's, what's really going on here? At what point in life does my skin complexion matter to you? You, like, I've sat in this lady's office and what she said was, oh, we've been hearing from all these business owners and we haven't heard from anybody of color or anybody else that are affected, and then we sit in her office and then she cuts us off, and then you, every time we sit in your office, you just cut us off, anytime we try to state our opinions and just block us out. And you guys just continuously block us out time and time again, but we elected y'all. And like, I really didn't care about the whole voting process and everything else that was going on, political stuff, but I'd never realized how much effect y'all really had on my life, like, all these people homeless and starving and hungry, and y'all just sit up there and just ignore us, and this lady's been looking at her computer the whole time, not paying no attention to anybody that's been speaking, or maybe the words are popping up on her screen or something, but what the hell is going on in Minneapolis, y'all? Can y'all fix this, please? Like, stop ignoring me. I mean, I know I ain't got no student tie on and no five hundred dollar pair of shoes like y'all, but damn, am I invisible?
Stacy, Stacy Rosanna is next. I'm sorry, um, there are other people that have signed up. Stacy Rosanna, followed by Deanna.
Yeah, I've asked her, she wanted to come up. But he said go to the end. He said go to the end when the, when the people are done, so if she's next, I'll just wait behind her.
There are two other people too, uh, Stacy Rosanna, and then Deanna, Deanna Dunlap. Ms. Rosanna.
Hi, my name is Stacy Rosanna. Um, I live at forty-eight twenty-nine thirty, thirty-seventh Avenue South, Minneapolis. Um, so I've been out at the fourth, and I've been at many of these actions, and I came as someone who, since I was sixteen, identified as a strong DFLer, as a lifetime DFLer, that I would always vote for the party that supposedly helped keep intact the social welfare programs that helped me make it to this place, that helped me get a college education, that helped my family eat. And I am ashamed of my party right now. I am ashamed of all of you who find that you are DFLers, that you care about our lives, that have used me for a token, for years, have asked me to give up parts of myself, to play your respectability politics. I've done it for years. I'm twenty-three now. I started when I was sixteen, and I know that I am a baby DFLer still. And now I don't think that I'm a DFLer no more. I don't think that I'm gonna be with any of you when the time comes for reelection, and I have the skills. I learned from y'all. I learned from your leadership. And I will be out there come election season, and I will not be with many of you. I will be against you. I will shame each person that I know, that I've organized with, that stands up for any of you, for Mayor Hodges, for our governor. I will shame each person. I know how much it hurts white people to be called racist and to be called on their white supremacy, and I will call it out and I will name it, because I believe in the power of language. I got disowned from, by my white mother for doing this work, for claiming and for naming that what she is, that ideas that she has are racist and white supremacist. What do I have left to lose? What do I have left to lose? I will be out come election season, I'll be out before that. I'm starting now. I don't sleep anymore because of what your police force that's supposed to be protecting and serving our communities has done to me. I don't sleep because of it. And with all of that time that I don't sleep, I will be reading, I will be watching, I will be contacting others. I know how to use the van, I know how you organize, I know about the strong ass, I know all of it, and I'll be out there.
Deanna Dunlap, Deanna Dunlap, uh, followed by Hani Ali. Ms. Dunlap.
Yes, my name is Deanna Dunlap. I live at twenty-nine fifty-one Bryant Avenue North. I am a citizen of the fourth precinct. Again, I am a citizen of the fourth precinct. Um, I also voted for some of you politicians as well. Um, being a citizen, I've witnessed police brutality a lot, being from the north side. Um, with witnessing police brutality has led me to believe that I'm endangered in my own community. I feel like the fourth precinct, as aggressive as it has gotten, must be pushing an agenda, uh, to militarize our police station. Um, I feel like the politicians are pushing propaganda to make it seem that protesters, citizens, uh, deserve to have a militarized community. Um, and, and I feel like you guys want us, uh, or excuse me, I feel like because of this, it's pushing my community into democracy. And you guys are standing under the constitutional right to represent the citizens who voted you guys in, and you guys aren't representing us at all. I feel like us coming here, wasting our nice, our time, hey, I got a Facebook notification right after class, like twenty minutes after class, and made it straight here. You know, I gotta get up at seven in the morning again and do it all over again. Last minute though, and it's crazy because I do pay attention to, uh, the politics, but I didn't get no notification of tonight, um, beyond my community. didn't get no notification of tonight beyond my community. And I feel like that's unfair and you're playing us citizens, who you guys are supposed to represent, who you guys are supposed to favor in our needs and our community, and we're sitting here crying out for help because you aren't. That's disrespectful. That's it.
Mr. Ali, Hani Ali?
My name is Cameron Clark.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can I just say Mr. Hani Ali had signed up? Is he here? Oh, Ms. Ali, I'm sorry, Ms. Ali.
My name is Hani. I live at 1 West Lake Street, south of Minneapolis. First of all, I want to say I just moved out here from Maine, and that's the whitest state in the country, and I didn't think it'd get any worse than that. It does. This state right here is the worst state in the country when it comes to racial disparities. I was, I was at the 4th Precinct every single day and I watched my brothers and sisters get beat, get maced by, by the Minneapolis Police Department. Jamar Clark was killed by the Minneapolis Police Department and the blood, his blood is on your hands. Betsy, it's on your hands. And I also want to address Mr. Worsome. You are the only black person in this council. Step up, do something. We had an East Africans for Jamar rally and we, we do not, we, sorry. Your inaction, your inaction is unacceptable. You understand? You are black. I don't know if you know that? You are black. If you look in the mirror and you don't see a black person, you don't get to represent the black people in this room and in this community.
Madam President, I'm sorry to interrupt, and I know that we're opening up to speakers who haven't previously registered. If I could, with your permission, ask that if you're taking speakers who haven't registered, could they stop over here with me when they're done so I can get it?
So we can get your name and address, please?
Thank you.
When you're through. Okay, we've gone through our list. So if people wish to speak, why don't you just line up at the podium? And we'd be happy to hear you. But again, check with Mr. Clark, or excuse me, Mr. Carl, as you leave to get your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Cameron Clark and I stay on 1717 Plim Avenue, just a block away from the precinct. And I'm the victim who got shot, or one of the five protesters. And my cousin is Jamar Clark, and I'm here to tell y'all I'm disgusted and I'm hurt that y'all want to sit up here and fund these police officers who, who's not protecting us, they're harassing us, and we've been out there protesting and it been nonviolent. I'd have stopped a lot of brothers that wants to shoot and kill and, and really hurt the precinct down there, and y'all really don't understand what we're going through. I'm out there protesting, the community's out there all together, all type of races, and we're feeding the homeless and the police, and we got attacked and it was a terrorist attack. And, and the police did not help us, and we're right there by the precinct, and then I find out it takes 15 minutes for the ambulance to come help us, but y'all want to sit up there and give them money. Y'all need to give my community money, that's where I stay. I walk up and down that block every day. I'm terrified for my life because I've been on the news, they know I'm related to Jamar, and I'm not gonna stop. I am a warrior. I'm gonna continue to stand with my people. And I believe, and I believe, I believe we need justice. It shouldn't matter if I'm white, black, purple, orange, it shouldn't matter. We don't deserve this. Y'all need to give this money to our community. I'm hurt right now, I'm still hurt from my injury, I'm disgusted that my cousin's gone. He should still be here. And y'all want to give the money to these people who killed my cousin and I know who set us up to get us shot because I was one of the main protesters on the front line to stand for my cousin, just not for my cousin, for all these people in here and for all lives that's around. And then it's just not black lives that matter, all lives matter, but the blacks ones are going through it the most. And we're gonna get justice one way or another, and that's what's gonna happen. Appreciate it.
Ms. O'Brien, you have spoken before, so I'm gonna give you one minute.
He didn't make me aware of the one minute. I don't think you get to decide that. I think there's 13 people out there.
All right.
Okay. So, real quick, and the only reason why I actually originally came back is because some of our people in here are actually afraid to tell their stories, right? So that's a problem here. So if you're not gonna do anything about that, then let me speak, okay?
You have two minutes.
We got people in here who have been followed by police, who have been stalked by police, I personally have been harassed by police. This is nothing other than slave catchers in 2015. If you guys knew your history, if you guys knew your history of the community that you're speaking for today, you would have done your homework, okay? Police, this is historic. You guys are investing in a profit system for white supremacy and capitalism and classism. That's what you're participating in. So anybody, whether you're black, Somali, Worsome, we coming for you because you too quiet over there. I'm so angry. Barb Johnson, when I talked to you about white supremacy, you walked up and walked out on me. Your face turned red and everything. You have no, you have no courage in the game. You can't even talk about something, even if it's something that you're doing. Your white supremacy is showing and we're getting tired of it. We're getting tired. Blah, I don't know what type of puppet string she has on you, but you're a liar. You told me and about 200 kids at PYC that if people came down here and mobilized hundreds of people, that you would listen, that everybody else would have to listen. You lied. I expect more. I expect more. People are out here suffering. There are being people whose cars are being searched, not legally, not legally out here, houses being destroyed. You guys are giving these police all these types of toys and stuff from the Clinton administration, right? This war on drugs, it's a political war. It has nothing to do about safety. You guys need to get out of our communities, period. You need to get your hands out of our piggy bank because that's what you're using us for. You're using us for your own personal piggy bank. You think we don't see that downtown's getting bigger and north is getting smaller? You all are participating in white supremacy. If you don't vote for, you're a part of white supremacy. You're a part of white supremacy.
Can you, can you wrap it up, please?
Can I do what?
Will you wrap it up, please?
Can you, can you make an effort?
Will you wrap it up, please?
Can you make an effort to do something? Because your family has been fucking up this community for generations.
Please, wrap it up, please.
My name is Maurice Franklin.
Sir?
My name is Maurice Franklin. I'm with Neighborhood Organizing Change. I stay at 639 Penn, and I only wanted to say to you guys, I just want to give y'all a short analogy. Say, I sell drugs. I'm going to jail. Y'all police shot a man in his head, his head, but he's still on the street. But y'all want to give them money to make a fortress? What the fuck is going on? For real. I did my time. I was wrong. I did my time. He wrong. He not doing no time. He innocent till proven guilty, right? But he innocent regardless if he guilty or not.
Hi, I'm Musuna Kahi. I'm a guardian alight in for Ramsey County, and I work with young people in foster care. I didn't go down there to the precinct every single day. I don't think I have the guts and the knowledge of half these adults and half these youth who were there every night, every day. But I will say something. I'll say thank you to Black Lives Matter because I have five youth who I knew for sure would be safe at that precinct. I have five homeless youth because Hope Street was closed down, they didn't have enough shelter beds. And my youth were safe, especially that night that was freezing cold outside, my youth were safe. They ate and they felt protected. They felt like they had a family. And Mayor Betsy Hodges, you should know this for a fact because you and Governor Dayton are on the side of the foster kids. But if you're not on the side of protecting black youth, you're not on the side of my people. You're not a part of me. I will no longer ever, ever tell my youth to go and say, Betsy Hodges will protect you because you're not protecting us. You may be protecting the foster kids, but majority of the kids in foster care are Native American and foster youth who are black. Most of our young people in foster care are black, African American, and Native American. So if you're not, if you're protecting the youth who are in the child protection system, why are you not protecting the ones who are on the streets right now? To me, in a way, you guys are worthless because I don't need your protection. I have the protection of my people.
Hi, my name is Peyton Williams.
And your address, please, sir?
Actually, I don't even live in Minneapolis, but I'm from St. Paul.
Okay, we still, we still want your address, please.
Okay, 870 Howard Street North.
Thank you.
All right. So I was at the precinct as much as I could, and right now, like after the protest, me and a couple of my friends who are from St. Paul have been noticing that Minneapolis Police Department has been in St. Paul following us. What is your police department doing in my city? We have our own problems already. What are you doing there destroying already, what's already broken? We already got enough shit going on. Minneapolis got enough shit going on. Y'all need to deal with y'all shit before you go over there and fuck us up. We already fucked up. That's all I gotta say.
Sir, your name and address, please?
Okay, Martin, 3015 West 45th Street.
I'm sorry.
Martin, 3015 West 45th Street.
Thank you.
I just want to start off with a fact where it was in the 1960s, where two-thirds of white people in the US were incarcerated. And then 30 years later, roughly, the numbers reversed and switched, and black people were two-thirds incarcerated. And you know, the reason why, I know for a fact, is that the government has been funneling a lot of money into black communities. So, and it's unfair, like especially like living in one, and you know, it's funny, like it's a small world because like two weeks ago, my, I ran into my ex-girlfriend, you know, we started talking for a little bit and stuff, and she was Jamar's cousin. And she, I mean, she broke down, she couldn't even make it to the precinct. And you know, I was telling her everything that was going on and it was, I don't know, I almost broke down myself because it's like, man, that's, that's your own kin, that's your own people, you know? And it's sad how like, you know, you go out and you tense just because you see someone who, you know, who's in a badge and a uniform. It shouldn't be like that, obviously. You know, it's, you know, every person of color can attest to this, but when you have to deal with microaggressions every single day, you have to walk out that door, people are looking at you and you know, not thinking that you can amount to anything, and you feel like at the end of the day, you have to kind of like shuck and jive just to get to the top. It's not fair. It's not fair. And I mean, if this doesn't get passed, then it's just like, I feel like, personally, I feel like I'd just be giving up. Just give up on life because it's like, there's no way I can get to the top. So it's, you know, it's not just me, but like, it's everyone else around me, doesn't matter what color they are. So, you know, it's, I've always had kind of like a sour taste in my mouth, like with, with the police. And you know, obviously, I'm trying to, I used to be very open to everyone and, you know, try and look, you know, really get to know someone, but when someone stops you the second day you get your driver's license and they say, you know, I'm gonna give you a texting, texting and driving citation, or, it was funny because I was like, where's my cell phone? I don't see it. It was in my backpack and it was off. You know, and, and that's just like, that's just my personal experience, but I mean, that's what a lot of people in this room can attest to. So, I mean, it's, it's not fair and it impacts everyone, so, thanks.
My name's Nick Espinosa from 609 Jefferson Street Northeast, and I grew up just across the Plymouth Avenue Bridge from north Minneapolis and from the 4th Precinct. And so I'm no stranger to the undercover racism that is boiling under the surface in this city, but I've never seen anything like what I've seen in the last three weeks. And we should be ashamed as a city, we should be ashamed as a community to see the kind of violence that was inflicted upon peaceful protesters at the 4th Precinct who were rallying because a man was shot in the head and according to everyone who we're talking to, he was handcuffed. And instead of the response being outcry from the elected representatives from this council, some of whom were there, and I, and I would like to thank Representative Gordon Conno, Representative Johnson, Andrew Johnson, and Lisa Bender for the time that you spent with us on the, at the precinct. But the priorities of most of this council have not been to stand against white supremacists who shot five protesters, has not been to stand against a hurt incinerator that's dumping thousands of tons of toxins on north Minneapolis. But the priority's been to go after peaceful protesters and get them out of there, to shut them up, to make them be quiet about the atrocities that are happening every day in our communities. And we need to put an end to that right now. We need new priorities. If we can make $600,000 appear out of a hat to reinforce a military fortress in an already militarized north Minneapolis, where is that money when we needed for equity? Why a year ago were hundreds of us demanding and fighting over chump change with the latte levy for $150,000 or $175,000 for equity initiatives? Don't tell us you don't have the money. It's clear that there's an issue around priorities here. And, and it's not just Barb and it's not just Blah, but it's the rest of the council who's remaining silent and voting along with them. I'm looking at Quincy, I'm looking at Reich, I'm looking at Frye, I'm looking at Goodman, I'm looking at Worsami, Palmasano, Hodges. And I'll just close by saying this, this council has espoused a lot of equity rhetoric, and I hope we don't have to wait until 2017 to see some equity action.
Ma'am?
Kathy Dalton, 84 Hickory Street. I actually come from the suburbs tonight. I saw the call and I got some dinner for my son and I came down here. And I've been down at the 4th Precinct many, many times since the occupation. I have a child of color, and every time I see a young man shot, I think, that might have been my son. And he lives in the suburbs, but he's a child of color. And when he's not with us, it doesn't matter. The police see him as a child of color, and it's not gonna matter. And I tell you the stories that I heard around those fires at the 4th Precinct, it would break your heart open. You should have been down there. Mayor Hodges, you should have been down there to listen to those stories. They're not lying about their kids getting shot and roughed up and taken to parks and beat up. When I was tired and I didn't want to go down there, I thought of my son and I thought of my friends, and I went down there anyway. As a white person, I cannot rest until we have equality for everyone. And all you white people up here, you should be thinking the same thing. We are all in this together. It's not us against them, it's not black against white, we are all one. You need to see that. You need to be there and listen to those stories. If you have hearts, if you have souls, you need to be on the right side of history. Make some good choices.
Good evening. Do you need me to say my name?
Your name and your address, please.
Sure. So my name is Leslie Redman. My address is 2315 Dupont Avenue South, Minneapolis, Minnesota, 55405. Okay, so I wanted to start off with this. I bet right now you all feel extremely hated, and I just wanted to clarify, we don't hate you. It's just that we love each other so much, we can no longer take the hate that is being I was really nervous to get up here, and I'm not really one to get nervous, but being in the presence of so many great people and witnessing them for the past couple of weeks, Professor Nikima Levy-Pounds, Tyrone Williams, Cameron Clark, Jason Soul, everybody, the youth, like just everybody, to see the community come together and to unite was beautiful. And then to see the opposite really hurt my heart. So, you know, I'm not from Minnesota originally, I'm here attending law school, I'm from Washington, DC originally. And I didn't grow up in a household where I was afraid of the police officers, or every time I saw a police car, I was like turning the next corner. That wasn't my experience, you know? I've had uncles and the police I've had uncles and the police force, cousins, numerous people in my family in the police force, but what I've witnessed at the 4th precinct is hurt and broke my heart and my soul. I watched, and I got maced, I saw people hit with rubber bullets and being tear gassed for no reason, I witnessed this with my own two eyes, it's nothing that I saw in the media, I witnessed this. I was there when those five protesters got shot. I witnessed the police officers look and do nothing, I saw police overcome right 10 minutes before with a mask on, they looked just like the shooters, like 10 minutes before, this is what I saw with my own two eyes. And then when them, when those men, those heroes, that's what I call them, because they saved us, I want you to know, I was like 25 feet away from the gunman, it was a three-year-old, it was an eight-year-old with their mom right there beside me. If they didn't walk them around the corner, God only knows what would have happened. They put their lives on the line for their community, these are heroes, and they're not being protected. They're not being protected, we're not being protected, the police officers stood right there, they watched, I heard like 10 shots, they heard it just like I heard it, because they were right beside me. They looked, they told someone, this is what you all wanted, they stood there, they didn't do anything, I saw it with my own two eyes, and then when I did see them do something, they came out macing people, they came out with their guns running into the crowd of peaceful protesters who have done nothing. Up still to this very day, we have done nothing wrong, we've come together, we've united, we said that we're not gonna take this anymore, we're not gonna just lay down and be kicked and kicked and kicked.
Can you wrap up, please?
Yes, sure, no problem. I urge you all to really take a look at your society, take a look at your community. I came to law school because I grew up in a community where I always saw people that looked like me being incarcerated, but I never saw anyone that looked like me being the lawyers and the judges. I look right now, and I only see one person of color. So you know what that tells me? We need to start running for office, we need to start doing our job. It's time for us to revive what politics looks like, it's time for us to take back our communities and start running for these offices. Thank you, I appreciate it for your time.
First, I want to make like a clarification, does anyone who's not white want to speak before me? Anyone who's not white want to speak, like right now? Because I'm in line, but, okay. My name is Neverhever, N-E-V-E-R, like the word, 5604 50th Avenue South, Minneapolis, Minnesota. Cool. Right, I do debate, and so I see Betsy Hodges at specific debate events. Inside of debate, we talk about anti-blackness and how that exists, like we talk about like how that impacts debaters, right? You show up, you clap, you vote for people, right? What does that mean when you leave that space? How are you taking the words that people are saying in front of you and using them to resist white supremacy with your position? I was there two, like, during two different moments, one where a black person made it over a barricade, this person was tased, thrown into the ground, hit, like head hit cement, right, dragged in, functionally kidnapped, right, wasn't released, right? Two days later, I believe, white person jumps the fence, they're told to leave, right? No violence is done to them, right? Is this what this investment is going to, more barricades to protect white supremacy? And I'm very curious on why white women are here, because I wonder what your placement in this is. Is it to uphold like white men's position, is it to get closer to whiteness? Like, what is gender politics in a world where you are just upholding white supremacy? There's no like freedom for you, there's no freedom for trans folk under white supremacy, I don't know, like cops are like raping women all of the time, so like, what are you doing in your placement to do anything about the violence that you are enacting, right? Like, as a white person, how are you like making your place and making your voice less traumatic? Your placement, you all went to law school, you all like went to schooling, like read the history books again, read some history books that you were not taught, like learn what you do, reflect on that shit like God.
My name is Tom Kruger, I'm at 1427 Queen Avenue North, yes, North Side. I am here because I love my community. One of my neighbors on their garage has painted, it says, "North Side Kids Are The Best Kids", and I believe that, I work in education and I study education, and I believe that, I believe that our kids are the greatest. As a white person, though, on the North Side, I have a front row seat for how my neighbors are treated, and nothing's been more horrifying than what I've witnessed at the 4th precinct. And I think what's horrifying about it is that, for me, it's new and horrifying, but for my neighbors, it's business as usual. And when I say that, that includes my students, it's business as usual for them. And so I'm here to say, white people, including our leaders, we are holding up racial justice work, and what's frustrating about that is, is sometimes people feel like they've been working so hard on it, and it hurts their feelings when there's a bump in the road, and that's a problem. It's not about us, it's not about our feelings. I believe Minneapolis, we could do it, we could be the place, this could be the place, but not with business as usual, and not when our feelings get hurt. So I want to say that while I'm horrified, the ounce of me that believes in Ubuntu and that our humanity is tied, gives me the chance to still believe in you a little bit. And I hope you can take that and salvage that and do something with it, but white people, we are holding this up, this is us, we're holding this up. Thank you.
Sir?
Yes, my name is Mustafa Adam, 12062nd Street, Northeast. First of all, I want to start with to tell you that I'm not a terrorist, you are the ones who are terrorizing people, and I'm not one of, and I'm not one of your preferred minorities or new good blacks, or whatever you call. Finally, I want to ask you, the mayor, are you going to resign?
Sir, this is not a question and answer.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. With that, with that, we've completed our list of speakers, and so I will close the public hearing. The City Council is now going to recess its open meeting for approximately 15 minutes, during which time the Board of Estimate and Taxation will convene and complete its business. And then the City Council will reconvene in this chamber in approximately 15 minutes. So, going to recess, the City Council meeting is in recess.